Are you speaking there?
No.
Okay, then.
I'm listening. That is very educational.
I'd like to call the special reading September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Would you please call the roll?
Gage.
Here.
Here. Bergeron.
Eric.
Bradbury.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Gas.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of justice for all.
Thank you. The Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional First People of the land in Ketchikan, the Tongas Klinkit people. Under this, we have communications. I don't have anything in front of us tonight. Brings us on to persons to be heard. Madam Clerk, who do we have to speak to us tonight?
First up, we have Mr. Matani.
Evening, Jay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I am here speaking because we, as a city, are at a critical juncture. We've had to make, we have to make so many hires and appointments in so many leadership departments. But tonight is very, very important. I hope Ms. Simpson is appointed as the interim manager. That gives her an opportunity to present not only her resume, but also an opportunity to see what she is capable. She has worked tirelessly for the city the last several months or years to project a city in a great image. This is important because we have to open up the hire of the city manager, which is critical inside and outside. But we have to look at the person who has literally run the city for the last several months. So I am excited and I'm hoping that you will appoint Ms. Simpson as the interim manager and to let us see what we have when we open up the pool to inside and outside candidates. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jay.
Next is Mr. Hatrick.
Evening. Good evening. I'm Bruce Hatrick. I was here once before.
I think your mic turned around.
Yeah, I'm Bruce Hatrick. I agree with him. I think Lacey would probably be a good person for the job. She's been, I mean, she knows what's going on with the city. She's dealt with some of my stuff enough, so I know she can deal with stressful situations. But anyway, while I'm here, there's two issues. One, I had this photo copied, but they photocopied the wrong side, so I have one copy for you. So I'll give it to her and then I'll get it around. It's got some scribbles on the bottom. Ultimately, it's discovery information that I've requested. And I've kind of went around and between you guys switching lawyers, I didn't get all the information in the, anyway. I didn't follow procedure well enough. A lot of it was due to COVID. So anyway, I'm redoing this. I'm going to hit every step. You guys don't have to have it, but I'm going to give it to you, plus the water board, plus everybody else. So there's no excuse. Now, the second reason I'm here is actually regarding your attorney, that attorney, and the water board, water department. And it's regarding, I'm going to ask you guys to conduct an investigation. Because I have a, we have an investigation we've been conducting on coercion and extortion. And this town is, got a lot of good, good old boy system going on in this town, which, which is great to a point. But the good old boy system, if it's not handled properly, easily turns into, I mean, collusion. Which, some of this discovery information, when you read that, you might get an idea of what, I mean, I'll talk more about it in a private setting. If you got, well, I'm asking you guys to do it. I'm asking, so your whole council right now has been asked. And you can look, like Seth Brackey and John Clanniger can be named in their personal capacity because they are decision-making. That's how they got named in the last lawsuit. Now, you guys are decision-making people. So you can be named in your personal capacity if something comes of this and you guys refuse to investigate. I mean, that's really, and the only, the other thing I'd like, Mitch Seaver should be left out of it because he's a part of it, I believe. I could be wrong, but I've also been looking into the bar association, having him censured, if not possibly disbarred. Thank you.
And that's all we have.
Thank you.
Would you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions at this particular point in time?
I think, I would appreciate it, I'd appreciate it if you looked that over. And I would, I'm going to be requesting, if you guys do have a vote on whether to, to look, to have an investigation or not. Because, because we are currently conducting an investigation, but you have information that it's very hard for me to get a hold of, the city has. And if, in a private setting, I can explain more, but I'm not going to get too much more into it because even that information disappears so easily.
So what I'm going to ask is the clerk, in order to copy this and send it out to the other council members by email.
Okay. I, like I said, I was, I had it copied, but they copied the wrong side of it, so I came with the wrong copies.
That, that's fine.
Okay.
Is there anybody else to speak to the council? With that, we'll move on to new business, the request for an executive session, appointing an acting city manager, KPU general manager. Do I have a motion, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council declare that consistent with the Assistant City Manager's report dated September third, two thousand and twenty-one, it is in the best interest of the city council to go into executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code two point zero four point zero two five A one and two for the purpose of discussing the appointment of an acting city manager, KPU general manager, which may involve discussion of subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation, reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion and to discuss subjects that, knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse effect, impact on the finances of the city of Ketchikan.
Good second. And as been moved second, Lacey, is your wish is to go into executive session, discuss this? It is, okay. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Gas.
No.
Gage.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Bradbury.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
All right. So with that, we will go ahead and move into executive session. We're going to take just a couple of minutes in order for the clerk to get everything set up. So we will reset.
We have everybody? Sam, you're back on? Good. All right, we'll come back to order. We met in the executive session, discussed the appointment of an interim manager, and we have a motion. Do I have a motion, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the City Council appoint Lacy Simpson as acting city manager, KPU general manager, for a term not to exceed one year contingent upon compensation as approved by the City Council at a future date.
Second.
It has been moved, and second, is there any discussion? Hearing the Senate and none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Gass?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Flora?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Our next item of business is 5B, which is the discussion and process of recruitment of a new city manager, general manager, brought forward by the mayor. So just for the general public's general information, the job of hiring the city manager falls upon the City Council. And there's all types of processes by which the city could do this. And there are, there is a process by which we can do it, advertising in-house and locally, and also going out internationally. The council has looked at a International City and County Management Association. They have a guideline for hiring administrators or managers, and it has a lot of very good information that points on it. And it's about the proper way about going and recruiting, and all the nuances that are going through that, the major decision points that you will come to, including the interim manager, how you initiate the recruiting as you move forward. So they got to talk about developing, kind of brushing off the manager's job description, and better defining those duties. And within that advertisement, at some point, you will also describe the community itself, its economic drivers, the arts, the population, the climate, all those other things that come into play when you're recruiting from outside. And so there's a long process by which the council will discuss this publicly as we move forward in regards to developing that administrative profile, defining what the needs of the city are, involving, you know, we'll have the public talking to us about that and taking those suggestions and recommendations, and the council will determine how they can do things with that. We'll have to compare Ketchikan as a community compared to what we see out already being advertised by other communities. And where there are many communities with higher populations, there are few communities that probably do as much as the city of Ketchikan does. And so in comparison, the city of Ketchikan not only does the sewer, the water, the police, the fire, public works, engineering, finance, building inspection, library, museum type stuff, but we also do the ports, the electrical distribution and generation, telephone, the harbors, the hospital agreements, you know, solid waste collection, the convention center, things like that, that probably don't come into play in a lot of other communities. So we're unique, and so it's going to take a lot of work by this, by the council, and hopefully with a advisor from an outside resource that will help us do this headhunting, to come about with a plan by which we do this. This is one of the most important decisions that this council will probably face, and not only this council, but the next council and mayor. So with that, I think it's a good idea that we get this process defined, we get the input from our council members about how they think this should go forward, work with our interim manager, and develop that plan and timetable as we move forward. There's a lot of things involved in this hiring, and the council is going to have to make decisions about how they're going to, if they're going to do it as a full body, or they're going to have appointed members from the body, and how the interview processes are going to go. And this is going to be a long drawn out process, and we have the issue of COVID, we have other things going on in the United States that will play into this, and I appreciate the fact that Lacy will be here for a minimum in this position for a year or until such time as we find the appropriate replacement. So with that, I think I'll open it up to council members for comments and discussion.
Your Honor.
Yes, Mark.
I think one of the first steps to consider in this process is finding the right agency headhunter, whatever you want to call it, for a couple of reasons. That entity will help define the process. The acting or the appointed city manager neither has the time. Of course, you will be part of the process, but with the budget and the other department heads that are retiring or may soon retire, that position will not have extra time to put into this. And quite frankly, I think it also helps with a dispassionate analysis so that the acting city manager has, not that I'm worried about it on a personal level, but you know what I'm going to say, that there's no appearance of any sort of conflict of interest, or I'm going to look for a process where I can hire my next boss. So I would think an early step in this is we need to find the right entity to begin this search. That doesn't preclude looking local, but this comes up often, and I believe everybody here is all for local hire. I don't think there's any dispute there. But I think we need to decide what we want, local or we want the best. Those are not mutually exclusive things. So anyway, that's where I think we should start, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Yes, Riley.
Yeah, I'm kind of usually find myself being a hire local no matter what guy, but I agree with Mark on this. I think for something with this much weight and this important of a position, I agree, it's, you know, obviously maybe a little preference to local if we have a great candidate, but we, at the end of the day, I think need to look for the best person. And I think it's important that we balance, that we balance not rushing it, but also not dragging it on forever. And I think it's important that we do that with the police chief and the port position, too. You know, we got to, we got to kind of stay focused on getting those filled at the appropriate time. So that's my thoughts.
Kelly.
I actually have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if they actually are related, but I guess one of the things I'd like to have an understanding with, and I agree completely with Mark, I'd like to do this in a way that doesn't look like Lacy's setting, setting herself up or anything, or anybody for that matter, and make it very transparent, have someone else running it, because there's just too much on our city manager's plate as it is. But it'd be, I would like to know, it'd be interesting to know what the actual market is, because we have all these positions, these very specific positions that are coming open. And I think just having an understanding of what we're up against in the coming year of finding somebody to fill that management position, be it the best, but also the, you know, just our, a lot of our positions.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Sorry to interject, just hoping to address some of council member Gage's questions. So we are trying to get a handle on what the market looks like right now for city manager positions. As you know, this position is incredibly unique in that it's a combined city manager and utility manager position. I'm not sure, there's another one really that exists in the country. But I asked our executive assistant to look at job postings on ICMA, and in the last 60 days, there's been 64 communities that are seeking new city managers. And of course, they are varying in size, and compensation, and budget, and complexities, and all of that. And then the utility manager side is a little bit harder to gauge, but we're, we're trying to get some information on that.
Thank you. So I just did a little bit of searching with the ICMA, and looked at some of the job postings and different things that were going around in the United States. And as example, the city of Bothell, I mean, there's a lot of communities out there looking for managers right at this particular point in time. And Bothell has a population of 34,000, and they are the same as we at council manager operation, base salaries for that are somewhere between 172 and 219,000. And they are using an outfit called NOVAC, and so they went out and hired a professional for that, and they're partnered with a larger group to advertise nationally. And they have, all these guys have opportunities to go out and do that. They have resources that they can look at. This particular one also stays with the manager for the first year to help them through the process. Ralph Anderson, who we used in regards to our wage study, also does this particular type of work. When we did SEPA, we use an outfit called MYCOF. So there's a lot of them around, and a lot of them may be utility oriented or not. But we have a mixed bag here because we both have the utility and the manager. And a utility manager, our director in Boulder City, which is a 16,000 population, you know, they're about 143 just for the utility manager, and they probably have a guy on top of that. Grand City in California, they're, they're looking for a city manager, and they're up to 0 to 215,000 for their particular point. And they're, they all have, whether it be tourism related, industrial related, transportation related, whatever, I mean, they all have their certain expertise. So I think that Mark is spot on when we talk about hiring the right person to come help us with this, and look at what we're doing, and what we're thinking about asking, to better define the job, better define the positions, and put it in a professional format that when we go out, applicants will look at that and respond. And then they'll, they'll coach the City Council in regards to, you know, some of the appropriate questions that you ask these guys to get them to speak to you rather than just answer a yes or no. They'll talk to you about confidentiality, because all these people that are applying probably have another job, and confidentiality in regards to this is so important. So the interviews and that type of stuff, as it's being had, would be behind closed doors in a executive session to not taint that person's credibility with his employer or the community that he's in. So there's a lot of factors in this hiring that I think that, as Mark related to, that a professional operation would help us with so we don't get ourselves in trouble and potentially get sued over something that we didn't do intentionally, but that happened. So, and then I think that reaching out to ICMA and see if they have any suggestions about how we may proceed, because they are a large organization, and they have an outfit called Range Rider that helps communities, and a lot of states have mentors in their state for this. Of course, Alaska does not, I think Oregon does, and maybe Washington, but may be able to get an outreach and just help us through the initial help us through the initial process to where we can get this person and then expand the search from there. So I think that would be the, the first thing that we would look at. I think the cost of this is, is varied. Some do it on a, on a flat rate or billable hour, monthly thing. Some of them do it on a percentage of the, the wage. There's all kinds of things. So that would be another thing that we would have to look at. So it, it could range from 50,000 to 150,000 to, to do this depending on the outreach and the markets that we reach. So again, I think this is one of the most important things that this coming council and mayor are going to do. So I agree that we shouldn't rush it. We should do it in a process that's measured and open and discussed openly as we move forward with through this. So that would be my, my generally.
Just, I don't know if anyone's thought about it, but Carl was a unique individual when it comes to doing the two jobs of KPU and city manager. So I guess the only thing I would suggest is if, if those two can no longer be run by one person, we may have to consider separating the two again, maybe looking for two, two people. I don't know how that would look, but I'm just thinking that, you know, if we can't, if we're not having much luck in that department, might have to consider it.
So generally, I think I'd like to speak to that first. And of course, I've worked for the city for 38 years and had a, a lot of time on the job, on the public work side of things and had seen a number of managers and new two managers come and go. The issue is if you're hiring a utility manager, you're not just hiring a utility manager. You're going to end up hiring later on a finance director, administrative assistant, a human resource because you can't have the finance director answering to two bosses when there's an issue with finances, who does he answer to first? The other thing that happened when we had a split utility and general government is we got silent. This side didn't talk to this side. This side didn't share resources. And I think that worked against us. I think now that we are a combined utility, there's open communications between these because Carl has management meetings and there are resources that we lend to each other that we probably didn't in the past. And again, I think that the, the reality of it is, is you hire good department heads that can manage that. We've seen, we've had excellent representation in the telecommunications division, in the utility division that, and, and on the general government side. So if, if a manager and an assistant manager, and the assistant manager was brought on when we combined those to help spread that load out for the manager, I think it's a very efficient process. Same way, we got, we got a single attorney and who is he going to answer to when they're, they're doing this kind of stuff? So that was just my two cents in how that operates. And I would suggest, I wouldn't suggest that we split them at this time. Riley, go ahead.
I guess I didn't, I misunderstood some things here because I, I guess I didn't realize that we weren't even going to consider that. I, I kind of tend to agree with Janice Lee. I think, I think it's worth looking at and from talking with some folks at KPU, having somebody who's specially specialized and focused on running the utility specifically on that task, I, I think it warrants some consideration maybe.
Yeah, I, I don't mind having a discussion, but I would just say in that through the process, hopefully we take into consideration all the aspects of that. Judy.
You know, we have heard over the years that maybe that it was time to separate the two. I don't know if it is, but I think it's worth at least finding out what the cost associated with that might be because especially given our budget right now, that I think could be a factor. But I also, how many times at this table did we hear from our manager that they didn't have time to work on something because they were so busy? So maybe it's something we should at least talk about. I'm not saying that, I haven't made my mind up one way or another, but we can't lose sight of that. We've, we heard that time and time again. And I think that we owe it to the employees and to the community to at least revisit that. Sometimes things work well for a while, but you know, sometimes you maybe have to go back and tweak it a little bit. I don't know how that works, but I think that getting a cost associated with that and, and maybe just some discussion on what that would look like because like you say, they do now share resources. Maybe they could still do that, but there'd be a cost associated. I mean, maybe there's a workaround, maybe there's not, but I think that also is an important discussion to have at this juncture.
Absolutely. Yes, Abby.
I would have to tend to agree. That's been my biggest, not concern, but biggest thought in this process is what if that person isn't out there or, you know, he's phenomenal at utility management, but he's not, he doesn't know anything about tourism or cruise ships or, you know, how our secondary economy works. And so that's been a big concern because those are two, the city management and the utility management, two gigantic, enormous positions that I think, thank you to our staff on the KPU side, they have now developed an amazing cable, fiber cable to really take off. And I think we need somebody to assist, to help focus and really start leading that forward to kind of benefit the community a little bit more, as well as a city manager to really start looking at our economy and trying to figure out what are our other alternatives? How can we boost the ones that we currently have? And I think those are just two totally different mindsets for somebody. And I, like Janice Lee said, Carl was one of those guys who could, could do it, but we also found him 20, 26 years ago. And I think a lot has changed from there. So I would like to also see numbers, especially one, a point I heard is sharing those services. There's no reason why we can't charter services for each other and pay that cost associated to each other to keep that one finance department, that one HR department, what other departments they may need and keep those costs down in, in general. On a complete side note, if we do keep this current job description, I would really like to see some more information put in there about our port. I feel like Carl kind of set a precedent where he was at a ton of meetings for our port, trying to help bring customers here and to guide it, help us get funding. And I, I want the person to step, who's, would be stepping into that position to also be aware that, you know, that, that's part of the job. It's not just city administration, it's also this and this. So that's one change that I would like to see in the job description so that they forelit, fully aware of what they're kind of walking into versus a generic job description.
Thank you. Mark.
Thank you. I agree with everybody. If we're going to have the conversation of whether the position remains combined or is divorced, now is the time. If we find good expertise, maybe they can weigh in on that. Some of the data that you're talking about already exists. After Carl got his last raise, we as the council received a lot of passionate comment from the public about that raise and rightfully so. So I asked the finance director at the time, Mr. Newell, for some data and I'm pulling this all out of my memory, which is always a little scary. But when those positions became combined until about two years ago, there was a savings to the city of about $11 million. So now's the time to consider it, but let's remember as we have this conversation, we've also sat here and had disagreements amongst ourselves about $70 a year for ratepayers. So we need to keep everything in the right frame as we go forward. The other thing that I'm going to disagree with you, Abby, a little bit is I, I agree combining resources or departments for efficiency is great, but you can't serve two masters. You can't have a city manager and a KPU general manager both telling the HR person, I'm next. It, it never works. So that's why when the prior structure was in place, that's why there was that separation. I agree turf wars are never good. I've been in work environments where different departments are always at war with each other. So we had a very unique and successful situation with the prior manager, with Mr. Amalon. If we can replicate it, I think we should do that. Now's the time to look at both options. And I believe as we go forward, some of this will help, help, some of this will be determined for us. If we go to a professional outfit and they go, you want what? You want a city manager and a utility manager? Are you guys crazy? There's no such thing. So some, some of the outside information we get, I think will help influence the direction we go.
Yes, so Lacy, any insight?
On which part, Your Honor? Well, I think, I think all of you have very good and valid ideas. That document that I did provide to the council does provide a pretty good roadmap, if that's the way that you want to go about this. Certainly there are a number, as the mayor mentioned, number of outside agencies that specialize in this type of activity and assisting elected bodies with trying to recruit a new manager, but they are not without their costs. We've used them in the past with some success. They typically charge a percentage of the final salary of the selected candidate. I think it's really important with those firms that it's clear from the outset, you know, what your expectations are of them and also doing reference checks. And I think we'll probably start that next to make sure that we're not picking someone who's going to lead us in a direction that we don't want to go. I'm really interested as part of this process, when we've, the council's talked about the job description. It definitely does need examination. There are things that have changed. Certainly the council has its own priorities that should be reflected. And that's, I think, the bigger conversation that the council needs to have. It's not simply the nuts and bolts of we want a candidate that has X years' experience or, you know, this amount of education. It's what do you want out of your new leader? What kind of vision do you expect them to have? How do they relate to their employees? How do they relate to the community? These are things that are difficult to quantify in a job description, but I think that's really important from the outset that you have that conversation and you come together and have that consensus instead of trying to pin it on a candidate or availability later on in the process. If you are serious about getting this right, getting the right person in there, you, you need to decide that from the outset. That's all I have.
So I guess at this particular point in time, there are a couple of things that we need to work on. And I'm a little concerned, of course, in regards to coming into budget and other things, how we're going to manage all this. But I think the first thing we should do is probably start to solicit and find out the availability and what some different hiring groups or headhunters would, would cost and what they would provide. And so we need to do an outreach and get an idea or a sampling of what that may look As Mark alluded to, he had talked to Bob a little bit about the difference in cost between what we have today and a single manager and what it was like in, when we had two managers. So if those documents are still around, and they probably are, it'd be interesting to have that information as we go into the discussion about splitting the positions or potential splitting those positions so we know the full ramifications of that. And again, you know, as a, as a city manager, his job isn't to know how to run a backhoe. His job is to know how to run the city and they are two different things. So when you talk about an administrator that maybe knows more about electric or an administrator that was more about engineering or, or construction, the reality of the city catchcan, we need an administrator that knows about administration, about how to picking the right people, talking about revenues and budgets and the things that keep the city running. So again, when you, when you talk about this administrator, he, he has to have those administrative skills and not necessarily be the do-all for the, the operations that he's managed because we're so diverse, be it engineering, be it telecommunications. Telecommunications is a complete separate item than electrical and a complete different item than public work. So when you talk about the separation based on expertise, that could get real messy. You could end up with three departments and, and that wouldn't work either. So I think the trick is, is that you have good department heads that know their job and are able to manage and direct the utilities, the telephone, engineering, whatever it may be. And then rely on a manager to do the management stuff that they've been doing for years in regards to budgeting, advocating, listening to his managers, making sure they have the, the funding and the tools to do what they need to do. That's what the administrator does. So just to keep that in retrospect. So I think that going forward, we have some information to gather before we step across the threshold into the actual nuts and bolts of, of doing that. And quite frankly, I wish Dave was here tonight because that's going to fall on Dave's shoulders as the mayor in the future and, and the future council members that may, may be here and they'll be making those decisions because this isn't going to come quickly. This is going to be a, a long drawn out process by which to get it right and get to the point where you advertise and, and know what you're doing. So, and they'll advise us on that timetable. But once you start down that path, you want to make sure that it is the right time period to allow for the application to come back for you to evaluate those, do the interviews. You don't want to draw it out too long to where it just seems like it goes on forever. So they'll help us with that. So with that, I think that we know that we need some information in regards to the headhunters and we need some information in regards to the discussion that will be coming forward and about splitting the, the two forms of government. And that's probably plenty, given the fact that you guys are going to be in the budget pretty soon. So is there anything else that council members wish to add on that discussion tonight? Yes, Judy.
I just want to ask about looking for the person to do the recruiting. Those names will all be sent to us and with details and we'll be able to sit and discuss that as an entire council, right? Okay, I just want to be sure. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think that you're, you're spot on with that, Judy. A lot of this process is going to take the entire council input in order to make it work because the entire council is responsible for hiring that individual. So it needs to be open and, and everybody needs to be involved in it. All right. Is there anything else? That was the only other, that was the only agenda item other than the executive session. So with that, we will have council member comments. Sam.
Well, I just want to say that the last manager, Carl Amalon, as a testament to his legacy, is the management team that he's left in place. I'm super happy that Lacy, as a part of Carl's management team, is going to step up to be the temporary general manager. And I'm grateful for all of the city employees and the job that they do and how to be a part of this very professional organization. And we're going through a rough time because we are missing some department heads and a city manager, but we'll get through it and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Judy.
Lacy, I'm really glad you came back to Catch a Can and decided to make this place your home. Congratulations on being appointed and thank you for all the work that you do. It's appreciated.
Riley.
Yeah, second, Judy. I think you'll do a great job, Lacy, and we're happy to have you. And like I said earlier- And like I said earlier, I think the real key is going to be balancing, taking our time to do a real thorough job, finding the best person, but also getting it done in somewhat of a timely fashion, as well as these other positions, the police chief and the fire chief and the port director. You know, I think we need to start looking at trying to, trying to execute on those and get those positions filled. On another note, I'm a little disappointed to see that one of our own members is suing the city and the constituents who we represent. A lot of people, a lot of people in town feel kind of betrayed by that, like they're being sued by someone that is supposed to represent them. So it's going to take us some time to build back that trust.
Thank you, Riley. Jan Lee?
Yeah, thank you, Lacy, for taking this on. I have all the faith in the world in you and thank you for coming back to Catch a Can. I'm glad Carl hunted you back down, huh? The, I think it's, you know, that's important, although I may not always agree on things. I think understanding the history of why, when and where we, we deviated and created these, this pocket for the manager and he did, did all these jobs is important to this process only because when we understand why we did it in the first place, even 26 years ago, it gives us a better understanding of why we would either want to continue doing that or look at something different. With the way things are going in, in the universe lately, I, I know that we're probably going to be looking for a while and I think that's true to be said about almost every position. I would prefer to meet every, you know, meet everybody halfway at the point where I don't want to be pushing people into positions only because we fear that empty seat. So I would rather find that person that's going to stick around and do a good job instead of trying to shove a round peg into a square hole or, you know, I just, if it takes a year, it takes a year. I hope Lacy will stick with us regardless of how long it takes us. And I am, this is one, another one of those challenges I'm up for, I guess. I feel like the last three years, we've been just one challenge after another and, but it's important, so.
Thank you. Abby?
So echo what everyone else has said about Lacy. Lacy, I've heard phenomenal things from the community already about you and I'm just appreciative that you would step up and take on this task. Like everyone said, there's a lot coming down the channel and thank you for that. The second thing is, you know, 9/11 is coming up this weekend, so please just take a minute to remember the men and women that we lost on that tragic day 20 years ago and all the rescuers and the people in the plains and everywhere in New York and just take a minute to remember them. Thank you.
Mark?
I quit. Oh, that was my outside voice. Thanks for doing this. Hopefully we will find the, the right person in a timely manner. I know we can't be rushed, but we need to be aware of the timeliness of this as, as we go along. It's a big ask for Lacy right now, so we just need to be very diligent and thorough in our search and do the best we can for the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. So thank you, Lacy. This is going to be quite an undertaking and we have the, I believe, the full support of the council as we, we go through this process. And I just ask the council for patience because there's times when we probably think it should be moving faster or maybe there's times when we think it's moving too fast, but have patience as we go through this process because it's unknown ground for a lot of us in regards to how you go about hiring the, the city manager. And quite frankly, we're not going to find another Carl Amalon out there. But when Carl came to the city, he didn't have that experience either. So he grew into it as, as he matured with the, the job and when, when we asked him to take on that position, when the city asked him to take on that position of a utility manager, he stepped up to that and fortunately, he made it work for 26 years. We've prospered in, in all parts of the city in regards to what we've accomplished. So again, when you're, when you're looking for that, that particular person, you, you got to look at and, and do these interviews and find that person that you know can, can learn, open-minded, has the energy to do the process and will work well with people because it's going to take a while for any person, regardless if it's just utility or regardless, to get up to speed with Catch a Can because as again, Catch a Can is unique in what it does. So that's all I got, so. We had public comment. No? So with that, what's that?
Motion to adjourn.
You can adjourn.
Keifer's not here, so someone's got to, right?